This conference will now be recorded.
Caller zero zero, we're gonna have to put you on mute since we can't get an identification. If you find that you have input you want to give, you'll need to identify yourself later on. But we will be putting you on a mute status until we have you identify. Welcome everyone to the October 12th, 2021 Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We will start with the seating of alternates. On the one alternate we have is Doug Jen Jenny, and he will be seated for Jerry De Fray. Okay, in reviewing moving on, reviewing the approval of minutes from the September 13th, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a need for discussion, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Jeff.
Okay, that came from Jeff Schillinger.
I'll second Alex.
Second for Alex Estio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I abstain, since it wasn't.
And abstentions.
I abstain. Janet, thanks.
Janet and Richard abstaining, Valerie?
Yes.
And motion passes. Okay, um, we do have public comment listed in our meeting. I have a feeling most of the people here are going to be speaking towards the public hearing that we also have on the schedule, but I do offer it up to any general public comments regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission and its efforts. And hearing none at this time, we'll move on to bills. Alex, anything for bills?
No, I don't have any bills right now.
No bills. And moving on to correspondence, um, we do have a.
I sent out the CROG monthly and a letter to be read during the public hearing.
Okay. And I need to go find something here, bear with me one second. And there, and. That it. And here. No, it's. Wrong stuff I have. And here we go. Okay, um, we did send out the letter that Alex mentions, which is the letter from Robinson and Cole on behalf of Mr. Reverend Michelle from Camper Lane. So, and it will have discussion, further discussion along that in the hearing itself. So we'll hold off on that correspondence, though again, it has been sent out to all the commission members for review prior to the meeting this evening. As for the CROG information pertinent to us, actually pertinent to us, let's see. There's the one from Wellington Planning and Zoning, which was a proposed zoning amendment pertaining to temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments. Receipt was acknowledged by CROG and they found no apparent conflicts with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. And again, we received that due to being a neighboring community to Wellington. We also received what happened to be another one from another town from CROG. It has its East Granby Planning and Zoning with the same proposed zoning amendment pertaining to the prohibition of retail sale of recreational cannabis. Again, finding no apparent conflicts there. There were a number of other ones, one pertaining to zoning amendment to site development plan requirements for a floodplain that was out in Canton, not really pertinent to us. Another one for Canton, which was district boundaries for the Farmington River Protection Overlay. Again, not pertinent to us. And proposed zoning amendment pertaining to new housing opportunity zone and accompanying standards. That was from Avon and no apparent conflicts there, along with the CROG staff commending the efforts surrounding affordable multifamily housing in Avon. And the last one is a plan from Southington, a proposed zoning amendment pertaining to opting out of parking maximum and accessory dwelling requirements. This was reviewed by the staff where they found no conflicts with concerns to neighboring towns. However, the proposed opt out of providing accessory dwelling units conflicts with multiple policies of their regional plan of conservation and development. And as it particularly relates to the goals of increasing the range of choice in housing. They, particularly if the town has not yet completed its affordable housing plan per section 80-30J, staff would encourage the town to consider CROG's Sustainable Land Use Model Code for accessory dwelling units. So again, something we've touched upon in the past and just what's going on in some of the other towns, both near us and outside of our true area. Again, CROG has a huge, huge coverage area of 10, 20, 30 or 40 towns that they deal with. Ashford not being one of them. We are under NICOG. We've asked for NICOG's input on a couple of items and we'll be able to discuss those later on also. So whether we receive that or not. I believe that's it for course, yes?
Yeah, what was the rationale of going on to CROG for their input? Because we're not part of CROG. Lot of the towns you just mentioned are, you know, almost an hour drive from here. So, you know, why would we be seeking their input on, on what we're doing?
It's not a matter of seeking input. It looks like it came out as a package of, on October 8th of CROG letters. And I will ask, I'll ask Michael, Michael, did we go out and grab these or were they sent to us as a package?
So we are obligated by state statute to submit everything that we do to CROG because we border CROG towns, so we submit to NICOG and to CROG. CROG has a Regional Planning Commission meeting once a month that they refer, that they review all text amendments and then they submit all of their comments to all of the people that submitted requests and all member towns. So those communications go out to everybody.
Okay, so again, the first couple that I mentioned were pertinent to us, at least, at least the first one was regarding Wellington. And it's proposed amendment per temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments. The others were just, actually we could even not have those into the record simply because, but we did receive those from CROG. Thank you for the question, Richard, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we will now enter the public hearing phase of our meeting. I'll be reading the legal notice, Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, Ashford Town Office Building, really as a virtual meeting, as it says, 5 Town Hall Road, Ashford, Connecticut. The Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, October 12th at 7:00 PM to consider the following applications. I will read all three of these into the record so that.
Excuse me, Jeff. I guess Jeff, I just got a call from Jerry De Fray and he's trying to log on. He's tried to pull the number and everything, he can't seem to get on. To meeting, keeps on getting a report that the meeting hasn't started, I don't know how we can help him.
He's tried to call in on the phone number also?
Tried to call in, he's tried to log on and he can't seem to get on.
Michael, refresh my memory on the rules for a member trying to get in electronically without virtual system.
I, I got an email about 10 minutes ago from saying that somebody was trying to join the meeting using last month's link.
Oh, because we're on GoToMeeting now, right, not Zoom?
We're on GoTo, but I, if he was accessing the nine, sound like someone was trying to get in on the September meeting link. So he needs to use the link on the current agenda. So let me see.
Let me, I'll try calling him and see if I can get him to try on, to double check what he's trying to get on.
I will email him, I will email him the, the agenda link.
Okay.
We are batting a zero tonight, huh?
Yeah. Slow. Okay, 19.
Alright, I'm gonna try calling too.
Okay. Okay, we have a caller 01 that's entered also. Could you identify yourself? Someone who just called in?
Yep, this is Carolyn and Rob Trotta at 22 Lakeside Drive.
Carolyn and Rob?
Yep, Trotta.
Trotta.
T R O T T A.
Yep. Thank you very much.
What is the man's name?
Rob.
Robert.
Robert. Trotta, T R O T T A.
Right, okay.
Thank you Valerie. Okay, Michael?
Yep.
You still working on it?
Well, I sent it over to him, but.
Okay, great, alright, so we will move forward. So again, as I was reading into the record and what I was saying is that we'll read through the entire hearing notices and well, we'll do it one at a time because it is, each one is a separate hearing. So our first notice is PZ 21-4, Special Permit Application per Article 4B, Section 3A.
I tried calling Jerry and I keep on getting a busy signal, so he must be trying to log on.
Okay. Again, Section 3, Article 4B, Section 3A, 19C, for a short-term rental at 7 Oak Drive, AKA MAP 54, lot 252, applicant being Nicole Smirros. So that is our first hearing. All of the members have been forwarded the application information, which I have to say, even on the record, I'm very impressed with the thoroughness of everything, Nicole. It's.
Thank you, I had.
Sorry?
I had some help, thank you.
Okay, very good. Just a couple of things to set the tone on the hearings, and this will hold for all the hearings. Mike, can you shut the chat room off?
Yep.
Okay, so no, no information will move through the chat room, so there'll be no sidebars, no ex parte discussions digitally or otherwise. We ask that you remain muted unless you want to speak or your time comes to speak for comment. You can either raise your hand digitally or in the picture here if you're online and ask to speak, or speak up to ask to speak also, if you're not digitally on. When you do speak, please indicate your name and address for recording purposes. And comments are to be directed to the, I'm saying the commission, it should be to the chair, but you'll be talking to the commission anyways, but keep your, keep your comments to the chair. There will not be a question and answer period amongst attendees. The members of the board may ask questions of the applicant. But again, it's very simple back and forth. We are limiting comments of the applicant to five minutes. Or any comment from any of the public to more, no more than five minutes. And that's five in total. So if it goes to one set of comments and then another statement needs to be made, the total will be five minutes. And again, members may ask clarifying questions of the applicants or the correspondence. So that being said, Nicole, do you want to give us a short synopsis of your proposal? Though again, it's very well laid out in our document here.
I'm just basically got what I have in my letter to the, the commission. Looking to short rent property, self-managing it and I'm there just about once a week, taking care of the lawn maintenance and things like this. Plan to be quite restrictive, probably to my detriment, on who is allowed to rent. We're not going to allow any parties, no more than two adults at, at any given time. Will be implementing other kind of tools to help us know there's a party. Our goal is to not disturb the neighbors around us. We really like this far, we're hoping that one day it becomes the spot that we are going to all the time and not having to rent it out. So we want to do what we can to keep our neighbors happy with us and, and not, not looking to shut us down. Anyway, I've been making good friends with one of the ladies across the street who has been helping out, giving me pointers, things like this. So I'm actually quite excited and hoping this, this is approved and I can move forward. I've been doing a lot of work on the house and trying to make sure that it's safe and accessible for whoever is going to rent it.
Okay. I have just a quick couple of questions. Do you have any, I guess I'm asking to clean off your crystal ball. Do you have any idea of what you expect to be length of rentals for the short term? Are they going to be weekly, couple of weeks, even a month to a month or something?
Well, I don't really want to do a month long, mostly because I've been afraid of it carrying out and becoming some sort of a long-term situation. Looking at a minimum stay of probably about three days. We, we're still, we're, we're gonna have to post and see what kind of uptake we get depending on what our, what we put in there. But we look to, we're looking to start with a three-day minimum. Not sure what a maximum would be, I don't know what the rules would be on a maximum, but for myself personally, I don't really want somebody there, you know, more than a month. Also because then I, I have another rental property and it, when things are long-term, things start to fall through the cracks and I don't want that to happen.
Okay, okay, thank you. The other question I have, you have a list of names in your application here, including your application packet. And I just didn't see what those were in reference to.
The names, that was the abutters list and, and to be honest, when I got home and pulled it up myself, I wasn't quite sure if I did it correctly. I put in the parameters on the, the government website saying that it needed to be, you know, to, all, all abutters within 200 feet of the unit. And this was generated from that, that website, so.
Okay.
You know, some of them, I don't know how close they, they are to the property. I don't know if it was, you know, they're kind of not caring. And then some of them, looking at the addresses, I know exactly where we are. But yeah, this, this was generated, I forgot the name of the website that I used, but this was generated through the Connecticut government website.
This, yeah, that came from the NICOG GIS, so we generate the abutters list as required. It's going, the, the list, the mailing labels that it gets generated are, that's the mailing address of the property owner. So that's why it doesn't necessarily reflect the physical address, because a lot of the people in the Lake area are not full-time there.
Okay.
Of that list, only two letters were returned to me. One for, and I knew this was going to happen because it didn't make sense, the address for a Grant Elaine life use, Grant, Michael and Laura, clearly not a complete address, so that was returned. And then another for a Ms. Maura Nelly, who seems to reside in Manchester. So I don't know which unit she would be, but somewhere within the 200 feet. This, these are the two that were, were returned to me. I had mailed these out before the end of September, so I would imagine if there were any others coming back, this is it already then.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Again, I didn't know if it was a petition, if it was letters of support or what it was, so thank you.
Mail them their copy of the legal notice so that they had their chance to speak.
Great, okay. Those were the only questions I had at this time. Does the, any other commission members have any questions regarding this?
Yeah, Jeff, this is Dick. I would ask Mark and Janet to weigh in on how this application and use fits with what they had developed for the land use regulations concerning this.
The, the short-term rental regulations were designed to avoid any situation where large numbers of houses became short-term rentals and the neighborhood was no longer a real neighborhood with, with people who live there. And it does require that the owner be in residence.
Mark?
I agree with Janet, that was the intent.
Okay, um, and actually we can do this discussion as opposed to questions of the applicant during our meeting under unfinished business and get into more detail. So I'm really looking for anything specific to Ms. Smirros's application and request. Okay, hearing none. I am looking for a, a motion to accept, I'm sorry, receive the application so that we can move forward with discussion as unfinished finished in our meeting.
Janet, I'll so move.
Second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so what's really gone on, Ms. Smirros, is that we have approved the receipt of your application. So we'll have further discussion at our meeting following the hearing. And go from there. You're more than welcome, obviously, to stay on or, you know, you can check with Mike tomorrow with the results of that meeting.
I, I think I'll stay on, thank you.
That's fine, absolutely, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. The second item or the second hearing, oh, excuse me, let me close that hearing for the first item of the special permit application and open the second hearing, which is the proposed text amendment, a new text amendment of Article 4F Lake District to establish specific zoning regulations for properties within the Ashford Lake and Lake Chaffee areas. Applicant is the Ashford Planning and Zoning and Planning and Zoning Commission. Got to type. So, uh, so what we've done to, for those of you that are on the phone, we had a goal. And our goal regarding this was to provide structure to a situation that is pretty much unstructured and non-conforming. Again, our goal, let me just find my notes here. Okay, here we go. Um. Our goal was to give, as I said, structure to some of the areas in and around the lake, developments that have been longstanding and don't really fit into, let me put it this way, the regulations that are currently out there for our identified zones have a very difficult, property owners have a very difficult time fitting into those requirements. So it makes a number of the lots both non-conforming as well as the need to basically seek variances and going to the zoning board of appeals to try and get changes made to allow development of their lots. And we felt that that wasn't necessarily a fair situation for the lake owners. We also were looking to curb wastewater and water runoff in the area into the lakes to preserve the natural habitat and beauty and the, again, the lake to better control the lake and protect a very natural special resource, the lake resources and around there. So, um, to that end, we've come up with the, in working with the commission and with our zoning enforcement officer, we came up with a relatively simple set of regulations, that Article 4F for the Lake District. We have run them by the two Lake District Associations for input. And prior to that, we actually reached out to lake residents with a survey that we developed internally to gain input onto what was the important matters that we should be dealing with. And thus you see some of the things dealing with both permitted uses, maintaining a method for preserving the, the lake properties themselves and the resource that they are, as I said earlier. And, uh, also just some general standards that allow for some control by the commission when it comes to lot size and runoff and impervious surface. So, uh, that being said, I don't know if the commissioners have anything further they would like to add to that opening statement regarding our rigs?
Well, I'd just like to say, as Jeff mentioned, we did take into consideration the results from the surveys and water quality was one of the top concerns of residents around both lakes.
Thank you Janet. Anyone else? On the commission? Okay, we will open it up to public comment. Again, we ask that your comments be limited to approximately five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the Lake District regulations as proposed?
Yeah, I would like to speak if I may.
Yes, Mr. Michelle.
Robert, Robert Michelle. I, I actually was hoping to speak for a little longer than five minutes. I didn't know it was a five-minute limit. I was thinking I would talk for five to eight minutes. But because of that, I will try and sort of speed up a little bit remarks that I've got. First of all, I, I want to say that the commission's done a really excellent job on addressing the concerns that they expressed in the survey they did and so on and so forth. You know, obviously I, I thought very deeply about the proposed regulations and I, I must have gone through some of the tortuous tracks that, that you guys on the commission went through and came across the same types of difficulties and hoops to jump through and so on and so forth. And I fully realize how difficult these, this, this set of decisions was to come up with the regulations that you came up with. And so I, I had my congratulations to you for these regulations. I'm strongly in favor of them, of the, of the regulations themselves and the intent. I just have a, a few comments about things that I'm, I got some areas of concern. And you have a letter from me and my lawyer about what those areas of concern are and I'm just going to summarize them now. I, I feel first that they don't really go far enough to protect water quality. I, I feel that some non-conformities are going to be created, which is contrary to the intent of your regulations. And I feel that a height limit doesn't provide an exception for solar structures, which I think there should be a special permit process for that. So I'm going to talk about all three of those areas a little bit. One of the things that I, that I found out when I started looking at the science of runoff. One of the things that I found out when I started looking at the science of runoff was that hydrologists in general talk about limit, you know, limiting impervious surfaces to 10 to 12% of the whole drainage. And my problem with these regulations are they only apply to the lake association's sphere of action. In other words, only part of the drainage. And in fact, there's four very significant parts of the drainage into, now, I'm talking about Ashford Lake, I'm not talking about Lake Chaffey. I should add that very quickly. I have no input at all about Lake Chaffey. But there are four areas of drainage that go into Ashford Lake. One of them is along North Road, another is down Camper Lane, another is Lakewood's Lane, and then something we can't really do much about, that is the Eastford side of the lake over which Ashford has no jurisdiction at all. And one of the things that came out of discussions between Mike and my lawyer, which I only learned about last week, is this concept of an overlay zone. And what I'd like to suggest is that to take care of these other drainages into the lake and try and control those as well as the drainage from our own properties in the Ashford Lake Association is to create some overlay zone. And the way my lawyer put it, he said either in lieu of the regulations you're proposing or in addition to the regulations to try and deal with these other properties. And a lot of those properties are large properties. And I like to give a few examples. If you take one of the small properties on Ashford Lake itself, these are lots that are 120 by 60 feet, basically, that's 7,200 square feet. You take 10% of that, which is your impervious surface limit, you come up with 720 square feet. And 700, if you've got a house at 720 square feet on a small lot with a small house like that, you've already got a nonconforming lot. So this is, this is creating a nonconformity and it's making it, you know, difficult for someone to make small changes like putting a garden path or a porch or something like that onto their lot. So there are, in my view, there's some real difficulties for people with small lots. And then if you look at a very large lot, and I'm thinking more in terms of those lots that are not in the Lake Association, these are the lots in places I just mentioned, that let's say we've got a two acre lot of 88,000 square feet, 10% of that is 8,800 square feet. And 8,800 square feet, I don't know whether, you know, how much you feel about these numbers. I feel 8,800 square feet is a huge amount of impervious surface. I mean, I've got a lot of impervious surface around my own property and it's nowhere near 8,800 square feet. And I believe that it's, it's just too much to give large property owners as of right the ability to put in impervious surfaces. So I think there should be a stricter limit on large lots than there is on small lots. And that's the main, this is not disagreement, the main perturbation I would like to see in these regulations is to try and address that difference between large lots and small lots. I know it's, it goes against the simplicity that you would like, but I think it's important in order to not discriminate against people with small lots. The, addressing the nonconformities that will be foremined, I have a one-third acre lot which my house is on, and that's going to be immediately nonconforming as soon as these regulations are put in at the 10% level. I've got over 10% of impervious surface. I've also got a solar structure on my property, which makes me nonconforming again for my, for my particular lot. So one of the things that I learned last week was that the median size of lots around the lake are .4 acres. And the lawyer, my lawyer and I came up with this idea that properties greater than .4 acres be subject to a stricter rule than properties less than .4 acres. And I hesitate to suggest numbers. I know these numbers are difficult and I know that you've talked about them a lot in the past and I wouldn't presume to try and to demand any particular types of numbers, but the sorts of numbers that I've thought through is lots that are greater than four acres, you should come up with a, an impervious surface limit of somewhere in the 5 to 10% range. In other words, more stringent than you've, that you're suggesting right now. And properties, properties less than .4 acres, subject to 15 or 20% range. Now, this gives more flexibility to the smaller lots and restricts the larger lots without taking away either communities as of right to do small projects around their properties. And if you take an average of 5 to 10% and 15 to 20%, you've come up with about 10%, which is what hydrologists generally suggest for drainage into a lake. So that, that's fundamental. Now, you can go, the low impact design, you can set a level for that. So for, for, for large lots, you could go to 20% subject to special permit and low impact design. And for smaller lots, you could go to 30% subject to low impact design or something like that. As I say, these are only broad suggestions. I don't have the depth of insight that you have, but I do think that they would address some of these inequalities in between small lots and large, large lots. Now, on the solar structures thing, I'm really strongly in favor of, you know, preventing the lake view being blocked. I think anybody who lives around the lake is going to worry about that. And so the, the, the height regulation, I'm strongly in favor of, but there are some situations where a solar structure above the height regulation that you're talking about is suitable. And the one I've put upon my property does not block anybody's view. It's shielded by trees to the north and west. It's, it's very innocuous in many ways. I think I might have one neighbor that gets, sees it more than other neighbors, but it's not blocking any lake view and so on. And there are technical reasons why it was a good idea to do that solar structure. So I do believe that if you put in a blanket height regulation, it will just block solar structures and make a person go to the variance commission to get a solar structure of that height. And I've been to the various commissions for solar structures and you can't show hardship. It's not possible, in my view, to show hardship for the solar structure. And so that means, in my view, that there ought to be a special permit process for a solar structure. And that process will ensure that there are good technical reasons for a solar structure of such a height and that it doesn't block anybody's view of the lake and so on and so forth. You can come up with a whole bunch of considerations for something like that. So in summary, impervious surface regulation does not protect the whole lake. It only protects that little bit by the Lake Association lots and is consequently unfair to small lot owners. And I think the regulation should be a little bit more complicated in order to take care of that situation. And I suggest there'll be slightly different regulations for impervious surfaces above and below 0.4 acres, the median size of lots within the Lake Association. And I suggest you provide a special permit process for solar pools. Okay, that's my summary of basically what, what we said, what the lawyer of mine said in the letter that I sent to the commission. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Michelle, and excellent job in summizing some, quite a bit of information that you had provided. So again, I thank you for keeping very close to the time limit. Do we have any other input from visitors to the hearing? Any clarifying questions of the commission of Mr. Michelle's statement? Not to go into long dissertation, again, we will discuss at the meeting, but if you do have anything to, you'd like clarified?
This is Carolyn Trotta. I'd like to say something.
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Carolyn.
Again, I'm 22 Lakeside Drive on Ashford Lake, and I'd like to, to reiterate what Mr. Michelle said on one point with the runoff from other properties that aren't members of the association. There's a lot of properties that have higher elevation and we do get a lot of runoff, especially Camper Lane washes out all the time down into the lake area that's caused a lot of issues for us down over by Farm Drive. So definitely, I would like to see some type of overlay district, anybody within our watershed that does runoff, that, that there be something to take care of the runoff into our lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barry?
Yes, I'm Tom Barry. I live at 42 Farm Drive. I'm actually reside in Eastford, but I'm president of the Lake Association and the comments I'm going to make now are personal rather than on behalf of our board of directors, which has not taken a formal position on any of this because we haven't had adequate input from enough members to be confident that anything that we say would represent the views of the entire community. But I would like to support what Bob Michelle and Carolyn have just said with regard to the overlay area and also with regard to the different percentages depending on lot size. I hadn't, we hadn't talked about that. I didn't see that till I saw the letter, but I think that's quite reasonable and should be considered. As far as the drainage of an area that extends outside the boundaries of the actual Lake Association, we do have a very serious issue at the north end involving Camper, it's Camper Lane. We have a Camper Drive with Camper Lane is the town road. And I've been kind of dealing with this with different select persons and the public works for a while now and no remedy has been taken. It's a combination of the, of the drainage, but it's also has to do with the actual, the drainage system that is carrying water to the lake more directly in many instances than some of our own drainage systems. So, you know, briefly, I would support what Carolyn and Bob have said on those two points and I would encourage investigating the overlay concept to address what is an obviously serious drainage issue coming from the town road on Camper Lane.
Excuse me? Is this Campers Lane or Camper Lane?
Camper, C-A-M-P-E-R-T.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barry.
You're welcome.
Other comments?
This is more from Mike, that it touches on this concept of an overlay. Mike, you would be proposing potential for an overlay for some of these lots like off Camper Lane that are not part of the Ashford Lake Association where they are generating significant runoff. So those lots outside that area of the Ashford Lake Property Association would be subject to the overlay. Is that correct?
Are you talking to me, Vic? Sorry.
Yes. Yeah. I'm looking for some clarification. What you'd mean by the overlay?
Yeah, the only way that we could, overlay zones can only be more restrictive. And so we can't flip this to an overlay and solve all of the other zoning modifications that we're proposing. So we would have to develop an overlay which basically fit all of the properties which contribute runoff in some way to these lakes. And as, as was mentioned, because one of the lakes is not completely in Ashford, we would have only limited control, but we'd have to, we'd have to model the topography to figure out the total extent of what those properties were. But it would, but again, an overlay zone would still ultimately be a regulation, which means it would not retroactively address any existing situations related to impervious coverage or runoff or any of those things. It would only deal with activity moving forward.
Right. And this would be primarily focused on the larger lots that are outside of the Ashford Lake Property Association.
It would, it would ultimately encompass probably everything. So, I mean, I guess we could have it butt up to where the zone that you're considering tonight begins, or we could create two areas and have this, the overlay be consistent with what we've got written here. We looked, I looked at some overlay zones early on. We were looking at Coventry and Lebanon and Marlboro and some of the other towns that have these Lake District type situations. And we, we, I think the commission sense at the time was that we wanted to have an incremental approach and not make, not add a $5,000 or $10,000 engineering bill to, to every application. And that's why we kind of moved in this direction. But we can certainly, we can certainly start that process if the commission's interested.
So the idea of an overlay would not preclude moving forward with what's on the table right now?
Nope, it would just be an additional layer on top of that that would be more expansive geographically.
Thank you for that clarification, Mike. Any other comments from the public or any clarifying questions from the commission?
Um, yeah, this is Janet. I have a question for Mike. You mentioned doing a topographical study. Is it fairly obvious what the drainage, what areas would be included in the drainage?
I suspect that most of the data exists through the various GIS either available with Clear, the state, or what we have locally. What we have to do is compare, yeah, if there's water bodies like rivers or streams, the topography. And then the third step for us to be able to figure out exactly what we want to do and where we would draw on the map would be to take that information and marry it with our parcel information, our assessor's maps to show actually what parcels are within it. So it's not overly complicated, but it's not something that, that can be done, you know, in, in a couple of days. But I, but I think the information exists in various locations. We just kind of got to compile it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I make just one very brief comment? To me, the, this 10% regulation on the small lot owners is very serious. And so I heard caution in going ahead with the present regulations as is without modification. Better to delay and look at this overlay stuff and so on before making final decisions because I suspect that some of the study of the overlay concept may affect your ideas about what you would do about lots around the Ashford Lake Association as well. So I know my lawyer sort of made this suggestion that you either do the overlay in lieu or as well as, either one is appropriate apparently. So, but I think, I think those options have to be considered extremely carefully. Either one is appropriate apparently. So, but I think, I think those options have to be considered extremely carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michel, I would add that to 10% is the starting point of what's permitted. Going up to 30% by a special permit, providing that the applicant can show that there is no adverse impact on drainage of going larger. So if you have a small lot and you want to go greater than 10%, you can apply for a special permit to go up to 30%. So it doesn't outline that or make it non-conforming. It just requires a special permit.
Can I, can I address that comment, Mr. Chairman?
Please go right ahead.
Yeah. The, let me, let me just think about that for a moment. I fully agree with the special permit process. It's the unfairness on the small lot owners compared to the large lot owners that I'm concerned about. In other words, if you can control the runoff from large lot owners more strictly than 10%, then you can ease up on the small lot owners and not make them all non-conforming. In both cases, I agree with special permits above a certain level. It's the unfairness to small lot owners that I'm concerned about. I agree with the special permit process. I think it's very good. But I, the fact that there's large lot owners at the moment that can go build 8,800 square feet of impervious surface, that's unfair. So I think the two, the two ideas have to go together and not pin all hopes on that special permit process and make the small lot owners essentially non-conforming, except that they can go for a special permit. I agree that they're not non-conforming, that they have to go to a variance. I agree with that and that's a good thing. And I think that was a great idea. So it's just that unfairness that I'm trying to think about and address and why I'm worried about just going for this blanket 10% on the small lot owners around the lake. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
May I say something, Mr. Chair? I'm not, thank you. I'm not a hydrologist, but most, most of the small lots are on the lake or close to the lake. So saying that they can have, they can have more impervious surface as a trade-off for somebody with a larger lot further from the lake, I'm not sure makes sense. Part of the problem with the small lots close to the lake is that they're close to the lake. So their water is going into the lake pretty quickly and not being filtered.
I can answer that to some degree, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow.
I don't think there was a question, but feel free to comment. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. One of the experiences I had about, I think it must be 30 years ago, there was a lot cleared on North Road. And that created impervious surface. Trees were chopped down, reduced, reduced the ability of the land to soak up the water and so on. And that water, because it starts at the top of the hill, comes down extremely rapidly. Erodes everything in its path if it's not controlled properly. And it's that, it's that type of thing that we're trying to control with these large lots. These large lots are out at the top of the hills. They're not close to the lake. If you're close to the lake, the water doesn't get to be enough steam to cause a big problem unless it's coming from the top of the hill. So something coming from the top of a hill will come steaming down the lake across a small lot and straight into the lake and cause all sorts of trouble. So it's not really a hydrology problem for the small lots close to the lake. The biggest problems we've had with runoff, I've been, I've been at this lake 42 years, you understand. I've seen it all. The biggest problem with runoff is the lots at the top of the hills being cleared, houses put on, and the water coming down the streets. The Birchwood Drive when I first was a mess, when I first came was a mess because of that. Camperet Lane's a mess because of that now. It's not the small lots of close to the lake. There's a problem from a hydrology point of view. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any further comment from the public? From the commissioners? Okay.
I think we've got a lot that we can discuss when we go back to our meeting.
Yes, absolutely. So I am looking for a motion to approve, or excuse me, accept the submission of the Lake District Regulations by Planning and Zoning. To be, again, we're simply approving the application of the, accepting the application, I should say. I keep making that mistake. Accepting the application. Do I have a motion?
Janet, so moved.
Second.
Second by Richard Williams, Valerie?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? I'm sorry, opposed? Oh, okay, none. Okay, so moved. So we have accepted for discussion at our meeting. Thank you for the input, Mr. Barry, Ms. Trotta, Mr. Michel. We appreciate the input. We appreciate you taking the time. And again, you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting following the last hearing.
Thank you very much for letting us comment. I appreciate the time.
Sure. Okay, the third item is, again, the applicant being the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, a proposed temporary moratorium, which is new Article 6 N Adult Use Cannabis to enact a temporary six-month moratorium on cannabis establishments. Again, those establishments being of a retail sale nature. And we opened up the hearing for, again, our moratorium, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, I don't think I have it right in front of me. Our moratorium was for six months, taking us to May 1st. Is that correct?
It's, it's for a maximum of six months. So from the date, from the date, it's effective for a maximum of six months.
So, okay, so we are now dealing with two, yeah, in that range, sometime April, May, June for a maximum of. Any, any discussion or input from the public?
The only thing that I would just mention while the hearing is open is that this is a, the hearing is to consider language for the temporary moratorium. This is not, so this just puts in place the moratorium so that the, the commission can consider regulations surrounding adult use cannabis. This does not make any decisions about how the town will deal with it or anything along those lines. It gives, gives us the breathing room. Because under the current regulations and statutes, we would have to treat an application for, for any type of cannabis establishment like a similar use. So for example, retail, which is allowed in most of our commercial areas. So this just gives us breathing room to not have to deal with an application prematurely.
And do we have recommended language that we, that's been developed or what's our status on that?
So there are some towns that have taken a crack at how they want to handle it. It's really a large disparity between what towns are doing. Some are saying, like Enfield, for example, probably geographically the closest that I know of, just all-out banned cannabis across the board. Some towns are saying, because there are tax incentives, so revenue, tax revenue generated by these establishments, a portion of that stays with the town. So some towns are saying, hey, we want, we want to have this. This is an opportunity for economic development. And so, and there's everybody in between. So once you guys decide on the approach, we can probably come up with some language, but nothing has been officially provided by the state.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, having no public comment, and the commission can speak freely when we come together, I think we'll move to accept the application. If there's a motion to accept the application for development of language regarding temporary moratorium, is there a motion?
I'll move it. Janet.
Janet motions. There was, there was a second. I'm sorry, I didn't see the second.
Richard.
Richard Williams, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Absentions? So moved. Okay, so that, with that, we will close the public hearings. Thank you, everyone, for your input and your attention to that. We now move into our meeting section. If I can just find my agenda here that I have. There with me? Here we go. Okay, so moving on to, back into our meeting now, the October 12th meeting for planning and zoning, item number seven, unfinished business, the Seven Oak Drive Special Permit for Short Term Rental. And so input from the commissioners regarding the applicant's request for this short-term rental. Any input?
Yeah, I appreciate all the effort you put into it and the thoughtfulness on it in contacting the neighbors. However, I don't, I don't see a compelling reason why we should allow it when our regulations require the owner to be in, or someone to be in residence, the owner to be in residence.
And that is specifically, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me and don't have it memorized. The specific regulation said it requires the, an owner or a someone to be in residence at that point, at that site?
Yes.
Correct. Article 4B, Section 4, Subsection 3 does require an owner to be in residence.
So I, just jumping in and granted, not my decision, but reading that language, it says if a short-term room rental occurs in the RA zone, I don't believe a room rental is what's being proposed here. I think that the idea is that the entire structure, I read that to be a distinction. Granted, I'm not the commission. But I think that there, there may be some intent to create a distinction between someone who's, who's using the portion of the property and/or allowing the whole property to be rented.
Talk to me about intent, Janet and Mark. I know you guys work.
The intent, the intent was for, for rental of the entire property. And the intent is that there are locations, not in Ashford, but there are locations where so, where so many investors have bought up residential structures and used them as Airbnbs that the, the community is just lost. There's no longer a neighborhood. So the requirement, the, the idea was that somebody has to be, somebody has to be a resident in the home.
Correct. And, you know, again, in Article 4B, Section 4, Section A, Subsection 1, you know, owner-operator of a short-term rental must obtain a zoning permit from the commission prior to offering their property for rental. A short-term rentals are conducted on a temporary and periodic basis. No non-conforming use rights will be recognized for short-term rentals existing at the time of the passages of these regulations.
So the, the definition of a short-term rental is 28 days. Isn't that right, Mark?
Yes.
You know, I would suggest that the owner consider, you know, she needs, if she needs to, to raise the money, that she consider long-term rentals. There's also a concern around the lake that, in the lake areas, that short-term rental people would not be concerned with the quality of the water.
Janet.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard.
I'm looking at Article A, Subsection 1. And it talks, the application must include either the, A, in the case of lots in the IRA zone, the name of the property owner residing on the premise. Or B, in the case of lots outside the area zone, the name and contact information of the property manager who must live or work within two hours of the site and express written consent of the property owner for such temporary rental. So why do you differentiate those two cases there when you put that, that item together?
Well, again, the, 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 one of the impetus is behind this, these regulations are to keep our communities as communities, to keep neighbors living next to neighbors instead of having your next, your, your building next door is really a business because it's short-term rentals. And if you're in a residential district, that would be more important than if you're in a business district.
So the only other thing that I want to point out, and I'm, I'm not trying to, to push back or create that perspective. We have two definitions for short-term rentals. We have one which is rental unhosted and one which is rental hosted. And if you look at the requirements of the section, you know, that are in there, it's allowable use in the RA zone, which is, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because in, in my participation in developing these regs and going through the process and advising the applicant in going through these requirements, making sure that she understood that these were the standards, I do not recall at any point in time the commission feeling like an Airbnb would be, would be occupied by the resident. Because we have bed-in breakfast establishments, which are in allowed use and separately addressed in the regs, which is why we included the one-year permit renewal. We discussed whether we include the term nuisance. And, and that if we got complaints related to this or that, the commission would use that in their renewals. If the commission thinks that short-term rentals need to be occupied by the owner, then I think we should probably look at adjusting this language because that's generally speaking, not what a short-term rental is.
Yeah, Mike, that's what I was trying to allude to. I don't recall the idea that a whole house would be rented with the idea that the owner would be in residence of the whole house. This was to try to get a handle on what would be permitted in terms of short-term rental of a house. And the idea is that it would be less than a month and it would be subject to all of the other requirements that are laid out here. So and Mike, where are you getting those definitions? What, what page are those on?
Those are in the definitions section. So it's page 25. We, we define short-term rental. We define short-term rental hosted and short-term rental unhosted. And that, and the unhosted is where the piece of language that was read, I think by you, which talks about a designated agent within two hours of the property. That's where that language comes from.
Well, if you go, if you go on. Airbnb and look up. Places to rent, you know, there are a number of them that, that. Owners rent out rooms or small apartments in their buildings. So there are a number of them that the owners are on site.
But again, that's, that's based on the fact that it is a, a single room or a portion of the home as opposed to the entire structure being. Dealt with being rented.
Right.
But I'm going back to Mike and on page twenty-five of the revised regulations. We have the three things that are defined, short-term rental, short-term rental hosted and short-term rental unhosted. And the unhosted. You know. Talks about the agent being within two hours of the rental property and. It, it's to accommodate transient guests for no, no more than three times during a six-month period. So. I, I guess, and I would ask Mike that. How we ended up with the definitions here that seem to be somewhat in conflict with what's in the body of the regulation?
Right.
I, yeah, I, I would have to go back and look, I, I don't even, it's been a long.
The definitions were in the body of the regulations and Mike asked them to be removed to the definitions.
Yeah, that was part of the formatting for the regulatory analysis when we did the codification, but as far as the actual drafting of the language, I would have to go back and look at the red lines to see.
Yeah, I don't think the language was changed, Mark. You should, we wanted to put all the regu, all the definitions in the definition section and not sprinkle them in, in the body of the regulations.
Yeah, I'm not saying the language was changed, I'm just saying that the language was, was in the regulation and it was, when it was removed into the definition section.
Yeah.
Any other input from other commissioners?
Well, I don't want to speak for Janet, but I think when we were drafting it, we were. We were trying to avoid commercial use of a property. You know, the, the point of drafting the short-term rental was allow a property owner the ability. To, you know, to rent their property on a temporary basis, not as a permanent twelve-month occupation.
I do know in the letter from Ms. Mironos, her intent is to not, and you know, I know. The best of intentions, but I know her intent indicated to. Return this, to stop renting this. Once she had achieved a certain level of financial stability and return it back to being her own second home. Obviously intent. Who's to say how long that would take or how long that would be? She did give us her intent also.
Sure, I was just speaking toward the regulation and what we were looking at.
Absolutely.
Speaking. From what our options are moving forward, you know, based on the fact that the hearing is closed. I mean, I think you, you have two options since we can't get any more information from the applicant. The, the, the language and I'm, what I'm reading now is, is that they're talking about in the RA zone says, show me the primary residence of the owner. You can, if you think the application doesn't meet the requirements, then you can deny the application. You can also approve the application subject to the requirements of the section. And if the applicant is not in compliance with one of those requirements. Then that would be a violation of the permit and. It could either be subject to non-renewal or enforcement or whatever. But, and I don't have the application in front of me because I got too much open, I don't know if she states. If this can be the primary residence entirely possible that this could be, be your primary residence, this is not an issue. But we can't ask her that, so we can either approve.
She is here, Mike, and that she indicates that she's going to have the next-door neighbor across the street watching over things. That she's got a security system, she can keep an eye on things, so she's not planning on being in residence. But I, I guess I'm confused a little bit here in the language, in the definitions versus the language in the regulations. There seems to be a conflict there. And I think that's a, a, a problem for us.
Yeah, you know. Primary residence is, you know, the place you call home, but. Residing on the property is a different, is something different. You know, you can have a single home and you can travel for work on assignments and you could short-term rental. Use your house as a short-term rental while you are, are working on a, on a work project for a month here or there, it's still your primary residence, you're just not physically at the property. And so there's a, yeah, I, I agree that there's a bit of a distinction between, are we concerned about it being the primary residence? Or that the person is physically there, someone is physically there managing the rental while it is being rented? Because again, I think that gets into an Airbnb or, I'm sorry, a bed and breakfast, you know, more traditional bed and breakfast establishment, so I. I think that it needs to be clarified the language written.
Well, if we, if we get into further splitting of hairs or anything on this too, let's look at the fact that Ms. Mironos, her indication is that she goes in on a weekly basis for maintaining it. What is, what is considered the requirement for being onsite? Is it twenty-four hours? Is it two hours a week? I mean, we don't have a true. Identification of that when it comes to hosted versus unhosted.
I only know one case, I think it was in Windsor, that dealt with a really long time ago. Residency based on a home occupation was a vet who saw, who said he was living there and that's why he wanted to run his vet business there. The town said he wasn't living there and, and the judge pretty much said home is wherever he says home is. But that's not widely applicable here, but the, you're correct, we, we don't really have a way to define a lot of that stuff.
Well, it does, it does say. In the case of lots in the RA zone, the name of the property, oh, I'm sorry, I'm misreading it, never mind.
If we had maintained, I'm sorry, if, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is correct, says the name of the property owner residing on the premises, premises, so it does. Require that the property owner be residing there.
Yeah, but. Janet, the section you're reading is the, to obtain the zoning permit. It, it's saying that. The, that the permit must have the, the name of the, of the person living there. Or in the case of lots outside, you know, the property manager. So that's not talking about whether the rental must have the person living there.
Is that the person would be living, if your owner is residing on the premises, that, that's where they're living.
Yeah, your section three talks about the property must be the primary residence of the owner. But that gets back to the point of what Mike is commenting on about the veterinarian. And, and I come back to the conflicting statements about hosted and unhosted in the definitions. And. When we went through this. When I looked at this in total, when, when, and I didn't go over this section line by line because you folks took the, the lead on it. But it was my understanding that this was really aimed at regulating Airbnb-type rentals. As opposed to prohibiting an Airbnb-type rental.
Well, it's.
Well, right, but an Airbnb is a short-term rental regardless of whether it was, you know, rented off of Airbnb or whether you're advertising individually. It was, you know, it was to address weekly rental.
Well, I'm thinking the commission seems quite torn on this, obviously. And I'm, I'm wondering if we need to. In this case, I think we are limitation. Please don't go by what I necessarily say on this, this is just my personal thought process. Is that due to the constraints of what we've written as a regulation. In this case, I'm thinking that the application cannot be approved. However, what I would like to recommend is that we go back and come back to our next meeting with new suggested language. That better defines and. Separates the nature of a hosted and unhosted situation. And try and get this changed to encompass better, I mean, we have a situation here, we weren't familiar with every situation that was going to come up. We have a situation here that we need to address and I think our language being rewritten would better address that. And ask the applicant to potentially reapply and in this case I would waive fees for any type of reapplication, obviously. And. Again, I put that out to the group.
Yeah, Jeff, I think that's reasonable.
Mike, any timeframes that we need to be aware of?
So. Based on where we are now, you can. You have sixty-five days to issue a decision, you can have another sixty-five days. With extensions, which means you can hold a decision on this application. For a total of a hundred and thirty days. If we, if we worked in earnest to get something. Done, let's say we workshop the language at the next meeting and, and then went through from there. It's plausible that you could get it done before you get to the point of having to issue a decision on this application.
Okay.
The one thing that I don't know of, based on the fact that we've only had four people speak here, is if there's a consensus on the commission that would even warrant. Reviewing the regs, because if the majority of the folks here don't actually want to change the regs, then it wouldn't be worth the process. So I would just want to make sure the commission has a consensus that it's worth the time, but we can get it done.
Okay. Could I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard.
I'd turn that into a motion, so we can.
That's just what I was going to say, could I, could I have a motion regarding the. Consensus, a, a motion that the commission like to. Re-review and potentially rewrite the current short-term rentals. For, I, I don't know, better clue, I don't know what, what, help me out there, Mike, better inclusion of multiple. Requirements.
I think the words would be to better define hosted versus unhosted rentals.
I'm fine with that. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make the motion, Jeff.
Doug, Jenny made the motion, I believe? And the second on that was?
Catherine.
Catherine, thank you. Yes. Uh. So all those in favor, and in this case, I'm going to take a poll of the. Members, just to be sure we captured appropriately. Richard?
Aye.
But, 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 but Catherine?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff Scholinger?
Jeff's on mute.
Moving on, Doug?
Aye.
And Janet?
Aye.
Okay, I don't usually put in my vote, but we'll put mine in, so Jeff Scholinger, one more time?
Jeff, I'll open up the chat. If you want to type it.
He's having a problem?
See if he sends anything.
Okay, all right, anyways, um, we'll go with a. In this case, a seven, two. Zero, two, I guess it would be a one, some type of extension in this case, so, um. So to that end, we will reexamine the language in the current short-term for next week. As for the application. I would say that we table the application until our next meeting. And I don't think, I don't think I, I don't need a motion on that, do I? Michael?
I would.
All right. Can I have a motion to table the current application from Ms. Mironos? Regarding the short-term rental.
So moved, Alex.
So moved by Alex.
Second, Janet.
Second by Janet, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Absentions? So moved. Okay, so we've dealt with that one. And Janet and Mark, since you are somewhat intimately involved, do you think you might be able to put your heads together? And take a look at that and draw in any assistance you might feel you need?
Sure.
Michael or Richard or any other member? Thank you, it'd be great, it would be great to hit the ground running for the next meeting.
Yeah, and guys, get to me quickly rather than otherwise, because I'm going to be out of pocket for a while. My operation personally is scheduled for the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um. And to that end, Michael, when you have the opportunity, should you have the opportunity to speak to Ms. Mironos, again, please reiterate that. We are working on this and that any type of reapplication requirement, should it take place. Will not, the payment would be waived. But I think we're going to fall within, if we can fall, as you said, if we can work at this diligently and fall within the timeframes, we shouldn't even have to worry about that. Okay, moving on to the next item, the Lake District Regulations. Again, those of you that took the time to review the piece from Robinson and Cole. Regarding the lots in question. I'll deal with a couple of things and I'll be very, very honest, this is Mike making me sound very smart, okay? First item is the regulations do not go far enough in protecting water quality. Well, the current regs right now do not at all deal with water quality. This is, you know, this is our first foray, this is our first step towards trying to deal with the areas in and around the. This is, you know, this is our first foray. This is our first step towards trying to deal with the areas in and around the lake. And it was developed to work with projects in and around the lake. That can become burdensome for the property owners due to the fact of lack of regulations, lack of zoning regulations to follow. There are certain areas that they talk about. The Lake Association could develop their own private property restrictions. If it should be addressed, that should be addressed beyond local zoning that again, do not fall within our approval of some of their roads. Those couple, a few of the roads they mentioned are town roads. And I have started some discussions with the selectmen and public works regarding the, especially the Camperet Lane running down and the runoff from there. And what's been proposed in the past or what's been looked at. As for the overlay, the problem is with the overlay is that it starts to, it basically changes the zoning. Of areas in and outside the lake districts. I mean Lakewood, Lakewood Lane, North Road. Those all fall currently under the RA zone requirements. And though a long range plan, it might be a good long range plan for us to develop. It becomes, if we just do the overlay on those, they become more restrictive to those larger conforming lots. And we can't make it less restrictive and still apply the lake district rules. Or as Michael was saying, it's probably two different movements. It's the zoning regulations. And then it's the overlay regarding the watershed itself.
Yeah, Jeff, I would also add that we're talking about the lake districts here. But we have quite a few bodies of water and rivers and streams. The Mount Hope comes to mind in that there's been quite a bit of work done on the Mount Hope to eliminate some of the runoff was going into the Mount Hope. So what we would talk about doing in and around Ashford Lake could have implications to a number of properties all throughout the town. So I would, you know, be hesitant to just jump in on that with, you know, without thinking about the bigger implication.
And you're very true. You're very right, Richard. It would be a bigger picture for us to do this. And I think, and I think would delay some excellent planning and some excellent work. And some excellent effect on the current lake districts to start getting them into the mix of, you know, the water runoff. And just not allowing for helter skelter, uncontrolled development in areas that are. You know, right on the waterway. And as for the. The development or the runoff from larger areas, well, larger areas are always going to, in a large runoff. Are always going to from the top of the mountain coming down to the front area. But I think the front area of the lakes have a more direct effect on a daily or. More frequent basis of rain that isn't torrential and rain that doesn't cause a huge runoff. But. It also has a. Again, when you total up all of the areas, it does have quite a large direct effect. And I think some of the runoff we see coming down from properties distance away. And going through all the filtering and all too, except for areas, times of large runoff, which we've experienced this year, which are kind of unprecedented also. Further input on that, the first issue?
Yeah, Jeff, I'd break into. Three, maybe four areas that they're making. To talk about improving the water quality in general, I think that's beyond our, our scope of what we can do with these regulations. But tackling the easiest thing first, his desire to have by special permit, a. An articulated, you know, solar facility. Including that as a special permit, as long as with the idea that we would make sure it didn't obstruct anyone's views. Because that would be part of the permitting process. I don't see that as a problem inserted in that. Going into the. Definition of what would be done to increase the impervious area. I had sent to Mike, you, Jeff, Alex. An email that summarized what had gone on in Coventry Lake. And I also included the language that Coventry Lake used to increase their impervious area from 10% up to 30%. And I would suggest that some of that language, which is, speaks to the kinds of things that should be done to evaluate whether that would be feasible. Should probably be added into our regulation. And I didn't see that going in, but that would at least give an idea of what would be required. And then the last item is the idea of having a small lot versus larger lot. I'm not sure that you really accomplished much there because we've got the, you know, the 10% up to 30%. And saying that we would not allow the large lot to go any more than 20%. I don't think that really does anything to prohibit the large lots that we were talking about early with, with the runoff. So I don't see that as something that I would recommend changing. So just kind of in summary, yes, for special permit for the solar. No for differentiating the large lot for a small lot. And three, putting an example of what needs to be done in terms of the technical submission. Of going from the 10% up to the 30%. And I would use the language from Coventry as a starting point.
Okay, thank you for that, Dick. I am in agreement with you regarding the lot sizes and the. Tiered methodology, when we do have a process in place for allowing a lot to show that it is. Meets the requirements or that it's acceptable to allow for a larger lot coverage. Based on what's on that lot of any size. When it comes to the solar array, I guess a couple of things that come to mind for me. And. Again, I've had some discussions with Mike on this. In the language, in the, in the suggested language that's offered, one of the things is that there will be no adverse impact on adjacent lot owners. And poles will not unreasonably block. Well, that gets into the issue of the. You know, moving away from language that is open to interpretation. And both of those statements really are open to, in the eye of the beholder, really, for interpretation. The other issue is that you think, you think about it, you've got this, you've got this maximum height tower now of 25 feet. If it were to. One of the limitations we have on a lot of our structures, our height structures, has to do with where it would fall in relation to a lot. Now, again, if it's on a two acre lot, something that high is not going to impede or fall into a proper, across a property line. But when you're talking properties that are 30, 40, 50 feet wide, and you've got a 35 foot tower. That tower could potentially fall onto someone else's property. It has that potential to reach across depending on where it is, even if it's smack dab in the middle of a certain lot. It could still reach across that setback into someone's lot, into someone else's lot. So I'm hesitant to allow for a variance of some type or a special permitting of something that large in an area that is that constrained. With lot size and house upon house, house behind house. And all the issues that might affect a property owner's property value.
Yeah, Jeff, I would go along with what you're saying in that I, he's got a lot of subjective things in his language. I would include the subjective item, but if it's by special permit. The commission could evaluate things like the fault zone. Whether or not it is a block someone or doesn't block some, someone or would block someone from future development. There could be a lot of those things that the commission could consider upon making that determination. And it would not be a good idea to put, you know, such as things in the language as he's done.
I can see, I can see the special, I could see the special permit working. Janet, you were going to say?
I was going to mention on a small lot, the, it might cast a shadow as well. On neighbors' property at different times of day. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm totally in favor of solar. But I'm not sure why we would make a height exception for solar. And then someone would say, well, but I want my house to be that tall. Why can't my house be that tall?
Right, because I'm going to make my house 35 feet and put solar panels on it.
I think the only rationale for that would be when you are in a smaller lot area like you are around the Ashford Lake. You really don't have the ground area or the roof area necessarily to put much solar up. So the idea of the articulated solar is, is more applicable where your footprint constraint. But yeah, you know, exceptions to the height as by special permit. Single and out solar as opposed, you know, I'm surprised someone didn't suggest we have a wind turbine on there too. Because we could put a wind turbine up on, on the lake and that, that would be up much higher than 35 feet.
So I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I don't think I'm in favor of the special permit for solar. I, I don't think I've heard a compelling reason for it.
Is there, is there current height requirement by the Lake Association also?
What did you say?
Is there a Lake Association requirement on any of this? Development?
The problem was, you know, the problem with the Lakes Association, well, I know Ashford Lake has a covenant. And in order to change it, you have to go into the deed of every Lake Association member and change the deed. So covenants, I think it still says you can't hang laundry out on Sundays. It's never changed. And I know. I don't know if anyone here is from Lake Chaffey. Lake Chaffey has to go to the state legislature to get its, to increase its dues. I'm not sure what they have to do to change their rules and regulations, but I wouldn't expect either lake to be changing them.
Interesting.
And Janet, how many solar installations like what he has are in Ashford Lake?
He's got the only, he's got the only poll.
And his, his concern about the non-conforming. In the general language of the RA zone, we grandfather in all non-conforming. So if he's non-conforming according to the current regulation with his solar, it's still there and it's still going to be grandfathered in. And the same goes for the amount of impervious that he is exceeding the 10% already, that would also be grandfathered in. He would have to though, go in for a special permit if he wanted to put in a shed that would increase the amount of impervious.
I wanted to ask Mike. Where, where the 10% came from?
I think that we use that as a baseline from our review of some of the other regulations. And then in also looking at the average home and lot size in those areas. I think actually Jeff did a, did a graphic that he shared with the commission, if I'm remembering correctly, which showed the various components. And we had bounced around on that number. Because, you know, at some point, someone who wants to put in a 10 by 10 shed is going to have to demonstrate what their coverage is and then what they're going to. And they're going to get caught up in that.
Yeah, Mike, the email that I sent to you, and I think that email was shared with the commission, and the email is dated. Saturday, January the 6th of this past year. And that lists the rationale for the 10%. It, I had gone around and looked at the average lot size on Lake Chaffey. And the, the size of the houses that were on Lake Chaffey. And the 10% pretty much applied for most of what's existing built. And then right, then came up with the fact that Ashford Lake was generally much larger than the Lake Chaffey lots. So therefore they would be, you know, well within that 10%. I also should add another thing that I kind of stumbled across looking at some properties. There are a number of properties on Lake Chaffey where houses are built on two or three lots, not just one. So I don't know how prevalent that is. I didn't try to do a count, but it, it definitely, especially some of the lots that are back away from the lakefront. There's a lot of houses that span two lots.
Well, there's a lot on Ashford Lake, including mine, that do that as well. My other question is to Mike is if somebody does want to put that 10 by 10 shed on. What, what's the criteria for saying that the wastewater is being handled and treated?
So if they want to put the shed in and let's say they're, they're at 11% and they, so they want to add a 10 by 10 garden shed. Then that's going to trigger the special permit. So they're going to have to come to you. And they're going to have to be able to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the commission. Based on the language that it references, I can pull it up. That. When it's been demonstrated that such design is accordance with subsection five of this article. Which is existing language in our regulations about drainage. The reason why we're putting that somewhat gray. Language about to the satisfaction of the commission is that there are. Varying degrees of practicality to doing certain things. Based on the size of the lot, the topography of the lot, soil, septic, you know, it's not one size fits all. And so we want to make sure that it's practicable, that they are. Not doing thing that's overly onerous. But this is going to create a. This is going to create a definite increase in engineering costs because that, that 10 by 10 shed, which is maybe only costing them. You know, not much money or that they're going to build themselves. They're going to need an engineer. They're going to have to do some design to show that the. The area of the roof, which is going to generate X amount of water is somehow being captured on their property. That could be a rain garden, it could be, you know, groundwater infiltration. You know, there's a number of different methods, but somebody's going to have to professionally design that. But there needs to be some flexibility because having worked with LID's type regulations in other towns. There's certain things that just from an engineering perspective aren't practical based on the components of a lot.
That was one of the issues brought up at the Ashford Lake Board meeting. When they discussed this was you're, you're imposing, you know, high engineer costs on people who want to. Makes changes, whether they're small or big. I don't know how I feel about that. I'm not sure. I'm not sure we want to impose that on people, but then how do we make sure that they're handling the water correctly? So.
The, you know, I was thinking about this because I, I, based on, you know, the comments that you had relayed about what the Lake District felt and thinking about what we can do. Yeah, the problem is when do you. Yeah, the problem is when do you stop? Because for example, we could add language which said the first 250 feet for any property which exceeds 10% as of the effective date of the regulations. You know, the first 250 square feet of impervious coverage is hereby exempt from subsection five, which means if you're at 11%, 12, 13, 14, 15, 29%, you can still add a small detached garden shed and not have to do any engineering. But we have to create some trigger, some stop point so that they don't just say, I'm going to do a little shed, I'm going to add a garage, you know, so it doesn't force them to do it incrementally. So, you know, we can certainly, I mean, I can certainly look into something along those lines at the commission, you know, because yeah, the engineering costs associated with a small shed are gonna be at least equal to, but likely double what the cost of that shed is going to ultimately be. But yeah, we won't get there if we don't start somewhere, as I think your other point.
Are there, I don't know, are there, are there best practices, recommendations that would be used instead?
Yeah, so like if you're adding a 200 square foot shed, we're going to require you create 100 square feet of rain garden.
That, right.
So rather than, rather than us asking them to hire someone to engineer the solution, we perhaps come up with, with pre-approved solutions that they can sort of implement.
Well, at least for smaller projects, like you say, if somebody wants to put on a shed, I don't want to make it prohibitively expensive. If they're going to add a three car garage, well, yeah, that would be something different or even a garage maybe, but.
The way to do that would be to create a minimum. So the town that I was in, granted, it was a Hartford County town, totally different from Ashford, but we had a square footage requirement. So it needed to be a project which, which was in excess of 400 or 600 square feet of a new impervious coverage to trigger the LID requirements. So if you did 400 square feet, you were fine, but we also had a look back period. So you couldn't do 300 square feet now, 300 square feet next year and skip it. So you could do that. And then those small, small projects would be exempt. It's an option too.
Yeah, Mike, I just sent you the, the email that I had sent to you on the, in January of this past year. It includes the attachment of the covenant regulations, which also describe what's required to get approval to expand the impervious area. So you might want to look at that and, and send it out to the entire distribution. I don't have a distribution for the, all the planning is on it, otherwise I would have sent it out to them. But if you send that out to everyone, that at least will give you an idea of where I was coming from.
Yeah, I think it was in one of the meeting folders, but if not, I can resend it.
So if I try to summarize where we've ended up for Jeff's comment and Janet's comment, we're pretty much not in favor of making a special permit for solar as a standalone. So that goes off the table. We're not in favor of having a big lot, small lot, different criteria for impervious zones. We leave in place what we have.
And, yeah, and again, on that, not at the, I think, time, I think as Michael was saying, that we, we need to start somewhere. We can always, after a period of time and see what we have for applications coming through or special permit requests and all too. If it starts to become a large burden based on what people are trying to do in their lots, then we can always look at that language and make changes to that language going forward. But we need a place to start and it's better to start on a conservative nature as opposed to just Wild Wild West and opening it up to large percentages.
And I think of the gentleman's concerns that his property is going to be non-conforming. Mike, I think you need to explain to him the grandfathering and the fact that his solar system is already installed. No one's going to make him tear it down. It's there and it's going to be grandfathered in. As far as him wanting to increase the impervious area on his smaller lot, he can do that, but it will require a special permit. And I think if you try to use some of the language that was in the Coventry regulation, that might give an idea of a less restrictive way to get the approval without hiring, you know, you know, two or three town engineers, you know, to do an application. Then lastly, I think we've agreed that opening up the can of words for a large lot overlay concerning water quality is something that we don't want to go there with this regulation. Did I capture everything?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, on, I found on the plan of conservation and development, page 51 has a hydrology map. I don't know how accurate it is, but both Ashford Lake and Lake Chaffey have pretty small footprints where their drainage basins, which is interesting. I think, I like Jeff's idea that maybe an overlay would be a long, long range plan to look at. I would like.
But you were saying basically in looking at the map or that current hydrology map, good or bad, you were saying that it doesn't look like its footprint goes out much beyond the lakes themselves.
Yeah, they're pretty small. Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
It's page 51.
Yep.
I would, I would prefer not to endorse this until we make some modification to help people avoid this, and these high engineering engineering costs for small projects.
Okay, so was that a motion that you made?
Yeah.
Or a suggestion?
That's a motion.
So, so again, if you could just repeat the gist of what you were saying regarding.
I move that we do not endorse the Lake District regulations until we just further discuss how to allow.
Modify and discuss the recommendations that were just made, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay. Recommendations on, I should be a little more specific. The, based on the recommendations regarding, well, you know, what are we taking on here? What are we saying?
Well, recommendations based on increasing impervious. What do I say?
Impervious coverage.
Impervious coverage. Impervious coverage for small structures.
Jeff?
Triggering it.
Yes.
And hearing costs.
I don't think that we should be making a motion like that. We should make either a motion to, to pass what we have or not pass instead of putting too many options on there because we're changing the whole agenda by doing that.
At this point, I think you guys just need to make a motion to continue the public hearing. And I will do my darndest to prepare some language that I think is reflective of all of your discussion. So you can consider that fact. So as long as the hearing remains open, you can consider those changes related to the impervious coverage and how we're going to handle what we're dealing with. So I can, I have some thoughts on how we can do it. And so I can try to pull something together for the next meeting if you want to leave the hearing open.
Okay.
Jeff, we didn't close the public hearing out, did we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, Mike, I would encourage you to go in and read the Coventry regulation. That's something that has been in place for 20, 25 years. So it's apparently, it's stood the test of time enough for everyone around Coventry Lake to abide by it. And I'm a little bit leery about trying to come up with special cases for if someone wants to put a shed on their property, they don't have to have a full engineering assessment to increase the impervious zone. You know, if you're going to increase it, it's a special permit and you're going to have to make a case in the special permit. I don't think we can not allow increase in up to the 30%, especially in the small lots. So I mean, it's just as a special permit, maybe we need to better define what's going to be required of getting this special permit. But I don't see us coming up with a special case for a shed versus a deck versus, you know, a driveway or what have you. That would be too many, you know, details.
Well, Mike, Mike just said that they would need an engineering report to add a small shed. So I think you could come up with a square footage that somebody could add. They'd still have to show you what they're going to do about the drainage, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be engineered. Or we could come up with some recommendations.
And I circle back to, this is addressed in about one paragraph of verbiage in the Coventry Lake Regulations. So I would encourage Mike, go back, look at that, see how does that play with what Janet's saying and see if we can start moving this thing forward.
And just going back to what Alex had said, yes, we did close the public hearing. You are correct.
So we're not, we're not extending the public hearing, Mike. We're extending our deliberation to vote on this.
Right, you can, you can adopt any change that's non-material or more restrictive following the close of the hearing. So as long as you're not saying, well, we were going to regulate, you know, 10% coverage and now we're going to go to 5% coverage or, or, or sorry, 20% coverage, you're good. But so you can't dial the regs back, but you can make non-material changes or make the regs more restrictive. I'm looking at your, your email now, Dick. And some of the stuff that's in our regs is verbatim. I think we took it right out of there. So.
But if you go into the attachment, which is the Coventry Regulation.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
I've got too many windows open here, but it talked about being able to demonstrate the one inch rainfall would, would not cause something else. I don't have this thing in front of me.
Yeah, so the other thing is that their regulation, I think this is another reason why we couldn't go, that they have recommendations that can be made by the town engineer, which we don't have. But I'm wondering if, if perhaps we can just create some type of workflow for them to demonstrate some of this stuff that's kind of outside the regulations, almost like a manual. That's not listed within the regs, but we obviously can't do that on the fly right now.
No. What we have currently in there doesn't really say what they need to do specifically to get the special permit to go from 10% to 30%. So I think we need to give some indication and that would not be a, make the thing more restrictive. It would be a non-material change to this regulation. And I think everything else that we discussed, the solar, the large lot, small lot, all of those things, we've agreed not to do those. So that puts us just adding a paragraph or so as to what you need to do to get the special permit approved. So Mike, can you take the actions to try to come up with that paragraph?
I can, yeah. I think if we, if we're just additionally clarifying what they, what someone needs to do, I would say that's probably not a less restrictive change. But the hearing is closed, so. You know.
Okay, hearing's closed, our discussion's ongoing. What we're trying to do is get to the point whether we would vote to accept this new regulation or not. And I'm proposing that we would vote to accept it contingent upon you putting together the guidelines of what would be required to get the increase in impervious area such that it would not be onerous.
I don't think, until we see what it is.
Yeah, we obviously see what it is, but again, trying to move forward on this.
I mean, we've, we've done this in the past, obviously. If we don't, if we don't like the contingency, then we can, you know, vote it down, so to speak, with the time frame we have.
Give me, give me till the next meeting to kind of digest where we are and what we want to go. I have a bunch of different things that I've written down for how we might be able to handle this. There are a lot of, there's a lot of literature and guidance and documents and resources around. There may be something that we can point to and simply say in accordance with or in consultation with and point to another guidance document. So that, give me, give me till the next meeting. So just don't issue anything now, make no decisions. And then where we are at the next meeting, based on where the commission lands, we can determine if we're, if we need to re-advertise and just reopen the hearing or if we're good. But I want you to.
Well, we would need, we, we would need to basically have another hearing. Correct? Because we've closed the hearing.
Right, so let's say after the next meeting, you review it and you guys say, you know what? We want to dial this back and go back to the less restrictive. Then I'm going to just put another legal notice in the paper and we'll hold another hearing on the revised regs.
So, so we don't, we don't need to have a motion or anything on this or a vote at this point. We can simply keep it under unfinished business, continuing our discussion for next time.
Exactly, and where we end up at the next meeting will determine whether we can approve with modifications or have another hearing or.
Right. Based on the nature of the modifications, correct?
Yeah, and Mike, if your, if your modification is basically clarifying what you need to do to get past the special permit, I would say that that is, doesn't fall into the case of materially changing what has been put to the last public hearing. We should, you should be able to vote on it.
I agree.
Yeah, the one question is if you guys, you know, if the commission wants to dial back, you know, not requiring a 10 by 10 shed to develop an engineering report or something along those lines, that's the only piece that I, we would need to clarify.
You know, I would say something as specific as that would be foolish, you know.
You know, there's, there's a lot of small. You know, there's, there's a lot of, of small homes on these lakes. There's a lot of people that have lived here a long time. There's a lot of people who don't have a lot of money. They might want to put up a little shed and I think it's, it's, it's really onerous to say you have to, I didn't realize when we were doing these, that you have to get an engineer report to put up a shed. I mean, a lot of these homes don't have basements. You know, you, you need, you need storage. I think, I think it's reasonable to come up with some small square footage that somebody could do without having to hire an engineer. Whether it's, it's a shed or a small deck or, you know, whatever it is. I, I just, I just think otherwise it's, it's a really, I think it's too onerous on, on the homeowners.
And Janet, I think we're agreeing, but in, in nomenclature, I'm saying, don't put in a ten by ten shed or something like that. Describe the process where you can get the approval without requiring an engineer's professional report. That's, that's the charge to Mike, is to come up with a simple process that you can get the approval.
But I think there's going to be a difference between putting in a, you know, ten by ten shed and putting in an addition to your house. It's going to, you know, increase it by thirty percent. So, you know, one size doesn't fit all. Is the, is the problem.
Mike, do you think you can come up with something that meets everyone's concerns here?
I can come up with something, something that meets everybody's concerns. I don't know. But I have a bunch of different ideas that I, I want to hunt down and, and I, I think I can, I think I can get pretty close.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Mike. Um, the last item we have, and I knew it was going to be a long night, is the language regarding the cannabis moratorium on retail sales in temporary moratorium. Mike, God, I don't want to put this on you again. Do you have some suggested language you could send to a, a couple of the commissioners to look at and work with?
So if the, the language that is for consideration tonight is set in place. So if this gets approved, then yeah, I think once we get through some of these other amendments that are, you know, once we deal with that, I can pull together, what we can do is have a discussion, a commission discussion for what the approach is. And then I can draft some language for consideration. There's, there is some.
Okay.
There are some, some good examples that I think we can use and I think.
Okay, so. So for the discussion right now, um, uh, the likelihood is we're not going to be generating town taxes.
Right, but the, but the state licensing process is not even in place yet. So for some of those larger facilities, if we got this developed in the next six months, you're not really going to see many, many applications anyways, because the state licensing process has not yet been developed.
I, well, I did, wasn't there something regarding areas and certain towns and things like this? I think we qualified for all of one, if, if, if anyone was ever interested.
Right. So we are for certain for the, the micro cultivator and retail, we are capped at one because we're less than twenty-five thousand people. But that's only until twenty twenty-four, and then the state is going to remove the cap. The idea, the purpose of the moratorium is that there is some concern that someone could come in and submit an application to us and say, I want approval to operate. I'm going to buy Dollar General and I'm going to, I'm going to do cannabis retail there. Right now, our regulations say retail is allowed use. And so we would have to allow it because we don't have regulations that deal with it. So they'd get their local approval and then sit on it while they go through and wait for the state process to happen. So this prevents someone from trying to get their foot in the door before we have regulations and then go to the state as a second step. But it's going to be a significant number of months before you see any of these operations really get up and running because the state process hasn't been hammered out.
Right, right. But what I'm talking about now is, you know, you were saying it'd be good to have some direction on language that the commission wants to go in.
Right. So, yep. That'd be for adopting regulations that will replace the, the moratorium regulation.
Yeah, I think what's, what's in, what's on the table now is simply agreeing that we put in a six-month moratorium. And Mike's got some sample language of what some of the towns have done similar to that, that we could use. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
So it is, it's a much bigger discussion to decide what we would want to do long-term. And I really doubt we're going to figure that one out tonight.
Right, right.
Yeah, but as far as the retail side of things, all you need to do is drive on the highway from Tallinn to Massachusetts and count the number of billboards advertising, you know, pot sales. We, we don't have to worry about it being sold in Ashford. They've, they've, they've got the market cornered up in Sturbridge.
Then buy that place on my way to Brewfield, actually. So had they actually had a, they actually had a, a vendor, they had a booth at Brewfield. That supplier. Anyway. So are we looking towards, I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard.
I'm just a wise ass comment. It's, it's right across the street from Yankee Spirits. So you can.
Yankee Spirits, yeah.
Buy your booze and you, and you fart right, right across each other.
There's a new sign, Yankee Spirits and Wheat.
I could just add, so the language that's written in the, that was submitted for review and to, for hearing was that it says, while the moratorium is in effect, the commission will undertake a planning process to evaluate the potential impacts of allowing these establishments and consider any draft regulatory language provided by the Department of Consumer Protection, with the ultimate goal of adopting a new zoning regulation, which addresses these uses in a manner which is suitable to the town of Ashford. So that's what we will do and we got six months to do it.
Okay, so, uh, so we're looking for a motion to approve that language as you just defined to us?
I can share my screen if you want to look at it, but yep.
It sounded pretty good, Mike.
Take a look.
Okay. So there's three sections. I don't know how big it is. So there's the purpose statement, which outlines that the law changed. And then there's a definition of terms, which basically says that we are going to define cannabis establishments as defined in the public act in the bill that was passed. And then the temporary moratorium, which is in effect for six months. And the section that I read to you is that last line there. So, so basically this is a proposed Article Six N. So it, once you approve this, it will go into the zoning regs as a section. And then when you adopt regulations, the Article Six N will become the new section related to the regulation of cannabis, cannabis establishments. So this is, this is what you are voting on to approve, section one, two, and three.
Okay, I've got it pulled up. It looks fine, Mike. Move that we approve it.
And we're moving to approve the language of section Article Six N, temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments as written.
Exactly.
Correct.
I'm, I'm doing that kind of for Valerie's sake.
Yeah, Article Six N consistent of section one, two, and three.
Is there a motion? Or did, Richard, you already made a motion?
I made the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alex seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions. So moved. Okay, we come to some people's favorite point of the meeting. Let's see here.
Zoning offices report.
Yeah. Search and rental. Okay, application included. Okay, public care. Yes, zoning officers report. What do you have, Mike? Anything?
Nothing to report other than I, I got an email and I'm happy to send it on to anybody who's interested from, there's going to be basically a housing forum, and this is not related to anything that we're doing with the Affordable Housing Grant. But there's going to be a housing forum coming up for Wyndham, for the Wyndham region. And they were asked that I provided to you all. They went out after the packet. It's the second section of the forum. It was, there was originally one in the spring, I believe. It's, it's called creating affordable housing in your community. It's in about a week and it's by the Wyndham Region Interfaith Working Group. So there's limited registration. So if anybody's interested, I can send you the registration information. And for what that's worth. Other than that, working on all of these applications and, and just the processing of the administrative zoning permits. We had the one enforcement item, which I brought to the commission two meetings ago that we voted to submit to town council. So that was submitted and they were issued a notice from the town attorney. So that has moved forward. So we're just humming right along and we, we executed the final, that was the other thing I finished up. We executed the final documents for the Affordable Housing Plan. So the notice of grant award, the, the resolution by the Board of Selectmen and the certified budget information was all executed, endorsed and sent back to the Department of Housing. So we got that part all wrapped up as well.
Mike, this was a follow-up on a action item you had at the last meeting. I did read the media. You were going to look into what was going on with Cumberland Farms, if there was any issue there or not?
So I talked with Lynette. They are having some issue with their system. I don't know what part of the system it is, whether it was septic or grease trap or, or drainage or what. But so the, what they were doing was pumping, having someone come and do a pump and haul to get it off-site. And then they were working with their engineers to figure out what was going on. If it may, I don't know exactly what the issue is there, but like I said, Lynette was aware of it. So I'm assuming Eastern Highlands has involvement if it's in fact related to the septic or, or anything along those lines.
And then one other quick item, they building that actually burned down across the street from the fire station. Has there been any, any activity on that?
From a zoning perspective, you know, I don't really have anything that I can do because there's nobody on the property and there's no, you know, violations, at least that I, that I've been able to see. The building department had issued notices to them, which is what resulted in the fencing. But I don't think that we have any real regulatory power to do much more there. Unfortunately.
Is there anything from a health department standpoint or anything like that that?
You know, from a public health perspective, you'd have to be able to show that there was something going on there that created a, like I said, a public health risk. I, I don't know. You know, it's a, it's a bit of a, a bit of a reach, but it would be up to Lynette to determine if there was anything there.
And you said no one's on site. No one's on property at this point.
No.
Mike, it was before my involvement in the, the town activities. But there used to be a fellow that was somewhat of a pack rat hermit that lived on eighty-nine. And he had just all sorts of junk. And I believe it was the Board of Selectmen that eventually moved to get his property condemned and they moved everything off the property. I don't know, Jeff, do you recall anything about that?
Yeah, I, I know the gentleman you're talking about, the, the sign butchers, thieves and robbers and thieves, whatever it was from, I believe it was John Wolfe. And that was probably in John Zulik's time, if I remember right. And as to what made that move forward, I don't have a clue at this point, but I'm sure there's, I know there's someone probably in the office that can spread some light on that. So I'll check with the Selectmen's office.
I would tend to think that Floretti and or Ralph Fletcher would know the history there.
Or even, I'm thinking more of the resident historian Chris Abicoff also.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Michael?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you for what you've provided to us to keep us aware of what's coming into your office. And let's talk a little bit more about some of this stuff. And please reach out if you're looking for guidance as to, from a commission standpoint or where we might or might not want to go on something. With that being said, I motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Janet moved. Seconded. Seconded by Richard Williams. All those in favor? I'm sure you don't have to ask for that. Thank you all. Thank you for attending. Again, we knew it was going to be a long night. We paid the penalty from last month's being.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Take care. Take care, everyone.